Okay, and I want everybody to sit quietly. I need some silence for this show. Thank you. So I'd like to open this town hall meeting with gratitude that is supported by many of the organizations in Las Vegas and initiated by the IAC, which is the Israel American Council, which has been in town for about five years on the board. And I'm very proud and passionate to see so many people who've come to listen to a really special presentation and a topic which obviously is in the front of our minds almost every day if you read the news. So my name is Dr. Neville Pockroy and I've lived in this community for about forty-two years, came for three months and got stuck here. It's a remarkable city and very happy to have this beautiful synagogue to be able to make this presentation. Thank you to Bechelom. So as you know, we've been exposed to constant threats and something we Israelis and American Jews are dumbfounded about how things can change so quickly and with an unknown consequence. So I'm happy that we can have this conversation, which is really important, that we are all fully informed, but I believe we're going to be very upbeat when we leave here because there are a lot of good things that are happening and we're going to hear from our guest speaker. So our first town hall meeting that the IAC put on in this community was two years ago in this facility, when we spoke about BDS, which is the anti-Israel organization, which is now all over the world. We had the deputy governor here who initiated the bill against BDS and with a lot of help from many sources, it was passed and signed by our governor in June of 2017 and it's being initiated in its full force and hopefully that's going to help at least in this state. By that time, there were another twenty states which passed it and some since. Our second town hall meeting was held in Temple Sinai. We had a wonderful speaker from South Africa/Israel. His name is Abraham Infelt and he spoke about conformity and unity, that no matter who you are in the Jewish community, right, left, center, orthodox, non-orthodox, we hopefully will continue to stay together and try to become stronger. So I want to just tell you that there was an amazing announcement made yesterday. Our Secretary of State, we call him the Foreign Minister, his name is Pompeo, and he appointed a friend of mine and some of you by the name of Ilan Kar, who is a prosecutor in Los Angeles, to be the roving ambassador. He's going to be given the ambassadorial function to monitor and help the governing organization in Washington to monitor and counteract antisemitism. I don't think this has ever happened in the world, not to my knowledge, that a country is appointed an individual to be the ambassador for antisemitism. And Kolakavod Ilan Kar, he speaks fluent Hebrew. He tried to get into the house, but didn't make it, but hopefully he's got a really better future after this. So that's really good news. Now, our speaker, keynote speaker, Bernd Volschlager, who I had the pleasure of spending some time with earlier and also in Florida, has come from Florida where he currently lives, he's going to tell his story, I'm not going to go into any detail. We then will have a panel of really spectacular people who are sitting in the audience right now and Noah, the director of the Israel American Council, will be the moderator. I'm going to ask now for Julie, who's sitting here, to please come and introduce our very special and distinguished speaker. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you, Dr. Pockroy. Good evening. I have the pleasure of introducing our guest speaker tonight, Dr. Bernd Volschlager. Some of you may be familiar with his life. As the son of a decorated World War II Nazi tank commander, who later converted to Judaism, learned Hebrew, made a leah, and was drafted into the IDF. However, his story is so much more. Not only is he a well-respected family practice physician currently living in Florida, he is also the author of three books, including A German Life: Against All Odds Changes Possible, a novel, Samson's Shadow, and Stauffenberg: My Life in the Shadow of a Hero. He is also a documentary filmmaker and most importantly, a husband and father of three. Dr. Volschlager made the decision to share his story with the world after four simple words were uttered by his son, Abba, mi Hassaba Shalit, who is my grandfather. As he had come to terms with his background and all of its contradictions, we are grateful for his choice to impart his insights as the current rise of antisemitism continues to grow. I'd like to welcome Dr. Volschlager to the podium. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you very much for inviting me. When I got the invitation to speak to an intimate crowd in Las Vegas, I said, sure, I'm going to do that. The crowd is a little bit bigger than I expected and I hope it has nothing to do that you're avoiding the State of the Union. No political jokes anymore. I don't compete, that's the territory. Again, thank you. And two things I learned about working with Jews as a Jew, feed them before you speak and speak loudly. So can everybody hear me? Is it okay? Thank you very much. Actually, whenever I'm standing at the podium, asked to be asked to share my story, I feel a little bit hesitant still because I didn't voluntarily talk about my life. Actually, my default position was not to talk about my life, but to keep it silent because I couldn't reconcile the irreconcilable issues that I had to go through in my life until my son Tal, as you heard, he was fourteen years old or fifteen years old. He's now an attorney in Miami, I cried over it for a while, but well, attorneys are people too. When he asked me, Dad, who is my grandfather? He would say, this is an easy question to answer. Well, there was a tiny little problem because on the one hand, his father, Yuss Trulli, is a Jew, Israeli, and I served as a physician in a combat unit in Israeli army. And on the other hand, his grandfather, my father, was a highly decorated World War II German tank commander, serving in an elite unit and convinced national socialist. So how do you reconcile this world? And I had to because I had to be honest at least with my son. And what I told him is approximately what I'm going to tell you in an abbreviated version. I was born in May the ninth, May the ninth, nineteen fifty-eight, in a gorgeous city in Germany called Bamberg. If ever anybody wants to travel to Germany, I'm not working for the German Tourism Department, but Bamberg is a gorgeous city because it's untouched by any wars. It's a pearl of history. It's the Rome of the north and the history, the sense of history, we learned in school from twenty-four seven. We had to name what who lived where, where the houses and buildings that famous people lived. We could rattle it down, thousand year of history. But one thing I noticed, that a certain aspect of history was taboo. There's a word in German called totschweigen, silence to death. Now, I had no idea why it was taboo, what was taboo, but I knew it had to do with some war. That I figured out. And also figured out that in the war, people win and people lose, but the fact is that there were more than fifteen thousand American soldiers stationed in a nearby city of seventy-five thousand meant that we didn't win that war. But that I figured out. Whenever I asked my parents about that war, because obviously it impacted on everybody's life, including my parents' life, the answer that I got, when I asked about my grandparents, they're gone because of the war. So the war was this huge monster, destroyed families, displaced people, and nobody wanted to talk about it. Finally, my father slowly but surely told me his story and my mother told me her story, why I didn't have any grandparents. And these were completely detrimental stories that they told me. When my father started to talk, he never stopped. He told me that he was a tank commander in an elite unit of the German army under the command of General Guderian, the father of the German blitzkrieg, and he was his personal assistant. And on every battlefront that Germany opened, from September the first, nineteen thirty-nine, the attack on Poland, my father's tanks the first to roll in. Following the next year, the attack on France, Belgium, and Holland, my father's tanks the first in. And of course, then the attack on the former Soviet Union, Operation Barbarossa in July nineteen forty-one, my father's tanks were the first to roll in. And my father's tanks rolled not only first in, they pushed forward to the most eastern point on the way towards Moscow called Orel, and he conquered that strategic city in a blitz attack. And for that, he was awarded the Knights' Cross by a man whom he still adoringly referred to as his Führer, Adolf Hitler. I had never heard his name before. I was a twelve, ten, ten years old boy. I just admired my father, who was admired by his friends who came once a week, month, or once a year to our house to celebrate the good old times, among them the senior general. And they referred to my father as Arturo, our hero, and Bernd, you have to be proud of your father. That's all what I knew. On the other hand, my mother told me a completely different story about that war. A story of suffering, loss, and disaster. She was an ethnic German, a Suditan German, several million of ethnic Germans who lived for hundreds of years along the border of Germany with Czechoslovakia in a mountainous region, and she belonged to, was born into a very wealthy family. My maternal grandfather was a glove merchant, could afford the best life that anybody could afford with a beautiful villa, and everything lost because of the war. For her, the war was horror; for my father, the war was glory. But there was something else. Actually, it's hard to believe, but it happened. We lived in this apartment, in a ground floor apartment, in this massive building in downtown Bamberg, patrician style building and eighteenth century style, huge. And we rented the apartment from the lady upstairs who lived alone with her maids. And my mother always told me, do not talk to her unless spoken to. She's a noble woman, a countess or greffin in Germany. So I only addressed her according to my mother's wishes. And in the hallway, right next to the wooden stairway leading upstairs to the countess's apartment, was a larger-than-life portrait of a man hanging on the wall, depicting an officer in officer's uniform, insignia on the shoulders, officer's cap, and the Knights' Cross around his neck. I knew that this was not my father because my father's pictures I saw at home, but when I asked my father who this man was, my father referred to him as der Verräter, the traitor. That's it. And I asked myself, that's funny, two men, similar uniforms, why is one good and one is one bad? I didn't know how to figure that out until I learned from the lady upstairs that this was a portrait of her late husband, Count Claus von Stauffenberg, the German colonel who was leading the assassination attempt on Adolf Hitler on the twentieth of July nineteen forty-four, which failed unfortunately. He was executed the same night, his widow Nina von Stauffenberg, the landlady, was thrown in a concentration camp in Ravensburg and survived because German officers protected her. Her children were given up for adoption and then sent to Buchenwald and were literally snatched from the hells of Buchenwald and the family reunited. And from her, I didn't necessarily went upstairs and ask her questions, a little munchkin, but I left my apartment always when I heard her grandchildren playing. And it was much more fun with them playing in her apartment, which was huge and beautiful and wall-to-wall covered with pictures of her husband. And I asked myself, how can this man who loved this family so much be a bad person? And in school, about twelve years old, we started to talk about that war, the time between nineteen thirty-three and nineteen forty-five. And what we heard in abbreviated version was the following. Adolf Hitler rose to power in March, in January nineteen thirty-three, appointed by his predecessor Papen and by the president of Germany, Hindenburg. He immediately took over power, destroyed the democratic principles of the Weimar Republic, established a dictatorship, thousands of people disappeared in concentration camps, started the Second World War, sixty, seventy million people died, among them, six million Jews as collateral damage of war. And then on the eighth of May nineteen forty-five, half and half it all was over as the Huns invaded and then left. Everything restarted again. That was of course a bunch of horse manure, I cannot use the proper word here in tempo, but it was definitely not the right story. And then came an event that changed everything and changed my life, the Olympics in Germany, summer of nineteen seventy-two. This was a huge event. It should demonstrate to the world that Germany is a different Germany, it was a different Germany, at least West Germany, that Germany was led at that time by a chancellor who was the prime minister, who was not tainted by the past. Willy Brandt, the prime minister, was the first post-war German politician who was not a Nazi. All of them beforehand were Nazis or tainted by the past. He was a socialist. He had to flee Germany in nineteen thirty-three, returned to Germany in nineteen forty-eight, reclaimed his citizenship, which he lost, and rebuilt the Social Democratic Party. And he was the first post-war German politician who in December nineteen seventy traveled to Warsaw and in front of the Warsaw Gedenmermorial, he sank on his knees, bowed his head, and asked for forgiveness. And this picture went around the world, posted on every newspaper, at least in my hometown too. And my father was yelling and screaming when he threw the newspaper on the breakfast table, schau mal hier wieder ein Verräter, look again, a traitor. Now, for me, a man kneeling in front of a memorial was something positive because I was raised as an Orthodox Catholic. My mother was an Orthodox Catholic, my father was a, well, a Protestant on paper, and she sent me to Catholic kindergarten, Catholic elementary school, Catholic school, I was an altar boy, she wanted me to become a priest. Obviously, that didn't work out. You have career choices. And I asked myself, how can it be that somebody kneeling in front of a memorial would trigger such a reaction? And this chancellor with a tremendous moral standing in the Western world, opened the Olympics to a great fanfare and I remembered because my parents purchased their first TV, black and white though, and invited friends over. And it was cheerful atmosphere, wine, beer, fine food, everybody was yelling and screaming, hello, hooray, and all the teams paraded to the stadium. And suddenly, a team paraded into stadium, that changed the air, so to say, changed everything. A team that carried the flag with a star inside, the Israeli team. The adults stopped talking. It was a do not ask the question moment. And I thought, that's weird, it's just another team, I had no idea what it meant. And then the same team that's proudly paraded to the stadium was brutally attacked ten days later by a group of elite units of the Palestinian Liberation Organization we know now. They were provided with logistic money and weapons from the East German government, the Stasi, communist Germany. They attacked the Israelis, butchered brutally two of the Israeli athletes, the remainder were taken hostage, and the German government begged the Olympic organizers to stop the Olympics, which they didn't do, until the German government came down with a hammer and said they have to stop. They dispatched highest ranking government members to the Olympic Village, among them the Minister of Interior, offering himself and other cabinet members as hostages for the Israelis. The leader of the terrorist group, his name was ISA, refused and demanded that the Israelis would be flown together with them to a nearby military airport and the German army should provide a Boeing seven oh seven to fly them out to an Arab country of their choice. And Israel should then exchange in a, of course, PR ceremony, two hundred eighty prisoners, Arab prisoners, Israeli prisoners, in a town called Cairo, most likely. It all went according to plan, all on live TV. Helicopters took off from the Olympic Village, both helicopters were terrorists and the hostages, flew to the nearby military airport called First and Philbrook, and then all hell broke loose. Firefight, explosion, the night sky lit with explosions, and suddenly deafening silence. And an American journalist turned around towards the camera and looked at the camera and said, they're all gone. What happened? The German police tried to liberate the hostages. The Israeli Mossad units on the ground and commander units asked them, do not attack because these are elite units of the Palestinian Army. They will overpower you. And that what happens. Even though eight of them were shot dead, the remainder, the ISA threw a hand grenade in one helicopter which exploded and all Israelis perished in the fireball. The other helicopter, they sprayed this machine gun fire and everybody died. And the next day, this picture that made me stand here today. Two helicopters on the tarmac, front page of the newspaper, one burned out with the charred remains of the Israelis inside, the other with the bodies of the Israelis slumped over the seats, covered with bloodstained linen, and a huge headline in German, Jews Killed in Germany Again. I speak perfect German, but I didn't understand the context of again. What does it mean? So I asked my father when I came home and said, Father, what does it mean, again? He said, that means nothing, not again with them, look what they do to us again. The victims as perpetrators and the perpetrators as victims, staining Germans' image, Germany's image. And in school, we started about, talking about it, but now from a completely different angle. Now, you have to understand, there was no Holocaust term yet, there was no Holocaust curriculum yet. Our teachers told us their stories, some pride. And they told us Auschwitz, Birkenau, Eichmann, Mengele, the Final Solution, in the name of Germany, of a democratically elected country in leadership, six million and more were murdered. And for me, it was a huge shock because I only knew these stories about the past as glory stories, but this was murder. And when I came home, I said, Father, in school, we learned about the murder of the Jews, they called it the Holocaust. My father cut me off, Bernd, your teachers are communists, it's all a lie, in our house we don't talk about that, never again, it's a lie. And here I was caught in a rock and a hard place. On the one hand, my father, whom I respected and feared, on the other hand, my teachers, whom I respected and feared too. And one of my, and I started to read whatever I could about that time. And whatever I read, I needed to discuss with somebody. And one of my teachers, a former Jesuit priest, told me, look, Bernd, what you have to do is to make amends to those who were harmed. I said, how can I make amends? I don't know Jews. He said, well, the Catholic Church, the progressive wing of the Catholic Church that I belong to, invites once a year Jews and Muslims from Israel to come to Germany to learn, to live in a peaceful environment, exchange opinions, and we always invite a German, you can be one of them. And so at the age of eighteen, I joined a group of young Israelis who were seventeen, eighteen years old, in Germany. And when young people get together, you talk about anything but what divides you, what unites you, music, food. I liked the Israeli girls a lot. So the spiritual enlightening, this halo you can take right away, was, there was not, there was some spirituality going on. And I'll leave it like that. And we developed a wonderful friendship. And she said, Bernd, if you want to come with me and you want to know my family, you have to go to Israel. Tachenis. I said, sure, I'd do that. I was a big Schwitzer, but I had no passport and no money. And three months later, I got some money and passport together and traveled to Israel, please don't do that. I hitchhiked to Munich, took a train, over the Alps, to Amkornau at the Adriatic Sea in Italy, hitchhiked on a, literally on a ferry, sleeping on deck. And it was not a cruise. And from Piraeus, we reprovisioned and I sent a telex that I would come, that was before Google Schmuggel, we lived a normal life even without. And I arrived in Tel Aviv, in Haifa, and when I set foot on the ground, I had this sinking feeling. On the one hand, elated to see her again, on the other hand, I asked myself, what will happen if somebody recognizes my name? And so I was, all my doubts were wiped away when she embraced me, took me with the Sherrut to Neve Shanan in Haifa, at that time a working class neighborhood. The parents were waiting outside, bringing me in, took my rucksack off her father, bring me in to a small apartment, insisted that I stay there, free the bed for me, they all moved in the living room, dished out the finest food that they could afford and chit-chatting with me in Yiddish, I understand nada, nothing. And her father wanted to speak with me. And he looked at me and said, if you want to speak German, Bernd, I can speak German too. I asked him, how did you learn that? He just pulled up the sleeve and said, ich war in Auschwitz. I was in Auschwitz and in other camps. And here I was, for the first time, a German young boy, a man, in Israel, for the first time in the home of Holocaust survivor, for the first time facing a Holocaust survivor. I wanted to sink in the ground. And he said, it's not your fault, but I want to know what they teach you in Germany about these times. And honestly answered, I don't know if it is enough. And so a few days later, I took off from work, he was a very muscular foreman in the port of Haifa, took me off from work, by bus we traveled to Yad Vashem in Yerushalayim. And literally by his hand, he took my hand and guided me with patience to the exhibit and I broke down. I broke down emotionally, I broke down physically because I could not understand why my people would do to these people, people that rebuilt their lives, rebuilt their profession, rebuilt an old country anew. They're special, there's something unique among them. And on my way back to Germany, I pondered the question, how can I find out more about Jews? The only way I could do it is to find Jews. There were not many, twenty-five thousand in a country of sixty-five million at that time, and they were hermetically sealed off in communities in Frankfurt, Berlin, and Munich because of the terror actions that we had of Red Army faction and Palestinian terror groups. But I found this small Jewish community in my hometown, comprised of about thirty to forty Holocaust survivors, displaced persons who stayed in Germany because the American occupation forces in Bavaria allowed them to have jobs that Germans couldn't get, real estate, finance, banking, and they got very wealthy, so they should have been. And I knocked literally on the glass door of one of these, of this small community in Bamberg, accessible only through the courtyard, and an old man opened the door and looked at me and spoke in Yiddish, was willst du? I must have babbled something down, but he let me in. We walked to this black corridor, lit, dark corridor, lit only by a light in the corner. And I asked him, what is this? There were so many names engraved on this black granite plate. He said, you don't know? These are all the Jews of Bamberg who never returned from the Raisersstadt. And this is the Neltamiet. And in his office, it was very hot, it was a summer day, curtain drawn, windows closed, he had this white short-sleeved shirt on, it was very pale, and a number tattooed. And I stared at the number because I knew what that meant. And he looked, das war Auschwitz, this is Auschwitz, my name is Itzak Rosenberg, was, what do you want? And I said, I want to learn. What, take a few books, probably a school project, you're not the first who comes here. No, I want to learn and help. Help? What do you want to help? He looked at me, he said, you're a unique man, after I told him the story. Why don't we make a geschäft in Essen? You'll be our Schabes Goy and in return, you will be taught by me, whatever I know. I had no idea what the Schabes or Schmabes Goy meant, I had no idea, but it sounded like a good idea. So he told me, come at six o'clock on Friday and I'll show you what to do. I was there, bull, six o'clock, he came at seven forty-five. And he said, was machst du? I said, you told me six o'clock. I said, six o'clock, seven o'clock, seven. You have to learn. We don't mean it. I'd never unlearned that, but I never knew why I should have learned it, but anyway, every Friday and Saturday, week by week, month by month, I did what I had to do, preparing the table, setting the, making the food. It was an Orthodox community, they taught me how to make a filter fish, that's the reason why I never eat it again. And when everything was, when the finished eating made our ceremony, I sat in the corner of this small stiebelech with a habima and a honorakotisch, it was very tight, and the alte Kacker, as you know, as you call them, pointed to me and said, der Goy, was macht der Goy dort? Itzak said, the alte Kackers, don't listen to them, you're mine, you, you just respond to me. And so I absorbed the liturgy, absorbed the culture, absorbed the mannerism, absorbed everything I could. And the closer I came to this community of choice, the more I distanced myself from the community of origin. Of course, it came to a couple of blows up, but the most important part, the most significant blow up that I had in my family was when Christmas Eve fell on the Friday night. And my mother was an Orthodox Catholic. I knew this like a film in my mind running. We went to church and then she made symbolic food, lentil soup and carp. Then my father was ringing the bell in the living room, we entered this huge living room, real Christmas tree, real candles. My father was standing next to it with his uniform, and he called it his uniform, his dark suit, finest suit that he had, with his Knights' Cross around his neck, singing festive Christmas hymns. And I was not there. The next day I came back, all hell broke loose, my mother crying, my father yelling. And I said, look, let's stop the Greek tragedy right here. I will not sit at the same table with you. You are murderer and this sign that you carry on your neck is a symbol of cowardice, killing civilians. He looked at me, raus. Well, there was a little problem going, living in the house in Kesse, it's a story of my life, I guess. And I'm, I was the second to last year of medical school, I had a scholarship, but I was a little bit tight, I never told anybody in the community about it, but Itzak must have noticed it and told some others because for the first time in the community, a man who ignored me constantly, his name was Aaron, approached me. He said, you bist der Goy. Very perceptive, I am the Goy. Dein Name ist Bernd, your name is Bernd, ja. Hör mal zu, listen. Deine Jacke und deine Schuhe sind schmutzig. Käufte neue Sachen. Ihr Jacket und Schuhe sind dirty, beide sind stuff. Gehen wir hundred mark. So I was insulted and was given money, I was perplexed, I went to Itzak, said, Aaron gave me a hundred mark. Aaron gave you a hundred mark? He is Kamtsan. He doesn't give any money to anybody. But you probably used the possibility that you get money as for two hundred, right? But you probably used the possibility that you get money as for two hundred, right? I said, "No, I didn't, ah, because you're going." He had this wicked humor, Itzak, this beautiful wicked humor. He sat me down, said, "Bernd, that's a joke. You have to understand that many of us have no emotions left. We don't know what happened to Aaron. We know from the Red Cross that he was in Auschwitz, that's all. He doesn't talk." And Aaron started to talk to me and tell me a story, which I want to abbreviate as much as I can because it bothers me in my nightmares. He was a member of the Sonderkommando, survived. These were Jews who get ninety days of extra life by herding their fellow Jews into the gas chamber, closing the doors, letting the gas do its act. When the screaming and yelling stopped, they tore out the bodies with gas masks on, tore the bodies out of the chambers, burned the bodies and crushed the bones and threw it on the killing fields of Auschwitz, in the pits. For that, they got life, ninety day extra, food, women, wine. And when they were lucky, they survived, but ninety days later came the next group and Aaron survived. Aaron cried like a baby when he told me that. He had his family perish, the entire family. Six months later, Aaron died. Itzak called me from the university, he said, "We, you know, Aaron died, we have the Orthodox ceremony, you need to come here in an hour." I came there and he said, "We need a Kaddishah, you will be one of us." I said, "I can't do that, I'm not a Jew." "You will do it." And then, when we buried Aaron, I told, gave me a sit do and said, "You read the Kaddish. You know the Kaddish by heart." I said, "I can't do it, you do it." When I finished reading the Kaddish, I knew I crossed the line. And I said, after five years, I said to Aaron, to Itzak, "I want to become a Jew, I have nowhere to go." He said, "That's a bad idea, did you already forget?" I said, "I want to do it." I said, "Look, I send you to Frankfurt, to the Rabbi, I pay your trip, pay the hotel, but don't come back with a machine and a thought in your head that you are, that you want to become a Jew." Well, I met the Rabbi, he told me that he will not convert me. Of course, there was no reason, I was not a Jew, my mother was Jewish or any Jewish relationship in the family. And I nudged him every time I met him. And finally, in the spring of nineteen eighty-six, he surrendered and said, "Look, Bernd, I refer you case to Rav Inigal Court, whatever happens, will happen." Uh, but there were tiny little things when you have to do. There's first a little surgical adjustment of your physique. And it's not a nose job, I don't want to talk about it. And then, he had to immerse myself in an Orthodox mikvah. Few months later, I did my surgery in Switzerland, in an Orthodox Jewish hospital. And then, in an Orthodox mikvah, in a Hasidic mikvah, belonged to a Hasidic community in Metz, I immersed myself in a mikvah. And in November, in December nineteen eighty-six, I underwent a halachic conversion, which was an unforgettable experience for me because it was not the Elizabeth Taylor, Sammy Davis Junior Las Vegas-style drive-through conversion. Those of you still dated, there's a dated, laugh about a dated joke. It was a real deal. I needed to explain why a German wants to become a Jew. I passed. And the Rabbi came back from a diûn, from the session. I had to stand up, they were sitting on a podium, very formal, black drapes on. And they read the Tuat Ghuu in Hebrew and then in German. I said, "You know what that means, yeah? Do you know your name?" I said, "What name?" Ben Abraham, the last name, but "Do you know, did you choose the first name?" I said, "No." "What is your name, Bernd, do you know what it means? The Bear Slayer, so you will be Dov, do we, take it, it's free." And I became Dov Ben Abraham and he asked me one more question, he said, "What do you want to do now?" And I said, "What I planned to say a long time before, I want to join the army." "Why do you do that?" I said, "I have nothing to give, no money, no, I have a beginning, I'm a physician, but in the beginning of my career, at least I can donate something to the Jewish people, I'm willing to fight." So I went, it was to the Israeli embassy and the Jewish agency in Germany. Within thirty days, I was recognized according to the Hochaschmutz. I got a stamp in my passport, temporary residency status and a ticket from Frankfurt to Tel Aviv on a one-way ticket. The day before, I tried to visit my parents, my father yelled and screamed, I should get out, out of here that I'm a traitor. My mother cried, but I couldn't approach the house. And I came to Israel, was assigned to a kibbutz, actually, it was a pretty nice kibbutz. Uh, and learned Hebrew during the night and pick bananas during the day. If anybody has questions about bananas, I can answer them all. Six months later, I was assigned to a hospital to get my German license up to Israeli par. Uh, one month later, I was drafted into the military, basic training, officers' training, assignment to a unit and they assigned me to Beit El. Because, and that was the first month of the first Intifada in nineteen eighty-eight in a combat environment. And I was standing there with my uniform, I was a lieutenant at that time, full battle gear in front of my soldiers, the commanding officer, made it very short. "Okay, we don't have much time, he's your doctor, Vov, whatever, to call him Doctor B. He's your doctor, don't want to have any, hopefully, nothing happens to you because I don't know how good he is, the caring way that Israelis are." And here, and then it hit me. I asked myself, "If they find out that I'm a son of a Nazi, they kick me out. They will throw me in the downtown area at night." I cannot talk to anybody about it, I was tight-lipped. And I literally tried to throw my life in this virtue closet, slammed the door shut, turned the lock and the key and, forget it. That was not a good idea. Years later, my son, Tal, asked me this question. Aber mir sah was erlebt. And I decided to tell him the story. My son responded, "That's a great story, Dad, can I tell my friends?" "No." But my luck, they were, had a family history day a few weeks later and I was told, of course, I was not there, that my son had questioned, raised his hand and said, "My grandfather was a famous Nazi." A little tip, that's not good in a Jewish school. I was called to the, uh, the, actually Rabbi's house or office and the school, the director of the school was there too. And the director told me, "Look, Dr. Walshleger, I know there's a very difficult situation in your house, you're getting divorced and the children suffer, but maybe Tal smokes a little bit drugs because he said that your father was a Nazi." I said, "My son has nothing to do with that, my father was a Nazi." And I told my story as fast as I could to take my son out of the hot zone. And the Rabbi looked at me and said, "Did you ever speak about it?" I said, "No." "Then do it." And he pushed me into, in his class. And for the first time, the words came out of my lips, I noticed something. The weight was lifted off my shoulders. And I asked myself, "I have to close the circle of life, I have to go back." And twenty years later, I went back to Germany with my son, visiting my parents in the only place that I could visit them, the cemetery. And ironically, in an old city like Bamberg, the Jewish and the Christian cemetery are in the same plot, just divided by a wall, not unusual in Bavaria. And my parents' grave, when you look, go into the cemetery to the left side, the Walshleger's grave, is one row parallel to the wall, located one row parallel to the wall that separates the Christian from the Jewish cemetery. And when you look towards that wall, you see the Jewish gravestones almost defiantly casting a shadow to the other side. And I told my son, "This is what you need to learn, you can never escape history. The shadow of history will be as long with you as long as you let it cast shadow upon you. You have to step out and I stepped out, look back and understood, I am not responsible, I cannot change it, but what I can do in looking forward is that it never will happen again." And that's what I made a motto for me. And one thing I'm grateful for my father, that he taught me without knowing. He taught me that hatred is not some dark matter in the universe that we just succumb to. Hatred is something that we create every day with words of hatred. Words that are left unchallenged. Words that fall on the fertile ground and left unchallenged. This is the mind of others and they sprout into deeds. And if these deeds left unchallenged, habits will form. I mean, these habits being incorporated by characters, then those form the social fabric of the society. And then it explains but never excuses why Germans saw everything what happening and said, "It's normal. Of course, he killed Jews, that's a normal thing we do." Everybody knew, everybody knew. My mother, my father, everybody knew. And what I learned from that is to speak up when the hatred begins, the words of hatred. Counter them, be proud and stand up as Jews. We as Jews have no reason to hold back, just because one politician, we shouldn't, shouldn't hurt him and the other politician not. We are a proud people, I say "we" because I belong to it too. We are a proud people and we should stand up and say, "This will not fall on further ground. You are a hater, you are an anti-Semite and we will stand up against you." And there's so many reasons, and I tell specifically younger children, to be proud of being a Jew. Because how can you explain that a country of Gornishts became a country of eight million, who is the leader in every field in the world, technological mathematics? How can it be? And one Rabbi told me, "Don't look for the answer, it's a nest." And that we should be proud of, standing up and saying, "Against all odds, change is possible. Those that join us will join you, I mean, I joined you. And we move forward with the pride of being a Jew and never, ever let it happen again." Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Stephanie Tuzman, President and CEO of Jewish Nevada. So great to be here this evening and to bring a few comments on behalf of Jewish Nevada. Thank you, Noah, and thank you. Wow, what an incredible, incredible, incredible story. While we're discussing antisemitism tonight, we must, as a Jewish community, be mindful that hatred and bigotry towards others sadly still exists and is very much on the rise. Hopefully, we use this gathering tonight to once again commit ourselves to fighting discrimination of every kind. Jewish Nevada is committed to standing with the organizations represented on the panel tonight, which I'll introduce in just a second, the Greater Jewish Community and all of those who stand in the face of antisemitism, hatred, bigotry and discrimination. It's now my great privilege to introduce the panel, which is moderated by Noah Gensch, the Regional Director of the IAC. Um, am I just pulling everyone up or? Yeah, okay. Okay, I'll read them all. Um, David Brog is the Executive Director of the Maccabee Task Force, an effort launched in two thousand fifteen to combat the anti-Israel BDS movement. He sits on the Board of Directors of the Christians United for Israel. Pastor Joshua Teis, from Southern Hills Baptist Church of Las Vegas, fifteen years serving as the lead teaching pastor and is a passionate supporter of Israel. Esther Finder, the President of Generations of the Shoah and a valued member of our community. She created a special collection of eyewitness testimonies from Las Vegas residents who survived the horrors of World War Two. Um, Jolie Brizlin, Nevada Regional Director at the ADL. She's been living in our community for over twenty-five years and is passionate about combating antisemitism and hate in all forms. And finally, Rabbi Felipe Goodman. Um, he's the spiritual leader here at Temple Beshalom. Rabbi Goodman is a passionate advocate for the state of Israel.
So, as we are organizing the chairs for the panel, that will take about a second or two and you'll get to see any of the guests. Okay, we will make sure that we turn around and address all of you. And I apologize that it's not hundred percent, but we really needed the podium for this session and it's not so easy to remove it. So, um, so I will also ask our panelists to make sure you look around and make eye contact with as many as you can. All right, so, uh, thank you for being here. And I have a few questions, I know it's a big panel, but let me tell you, each one of these people has such, such an enormous amount of knowledge and ideas to share and I couldn't let somebody not be here. So we will keep our answers sort of to the point. Um, we also want to hear your questions. So, there are people, there's Dandy and Mai walking around. If you have a question in specifically that you would like to ask the Dr. Walshleger or any of our panelists, please do so, write it down on a note. I will get all the questions and I will ask all of them as time permitted, okay? So feel free, because I know many of you would like to ask questions. And after the panel, just so you know, I will invite Rabbi Sandy Axarad from Temple Neretamid to give us the closing remarks, followed by two community songs that we will have together with DJ Sina and Cantor Hutchins. So please stay with us throughout the program. All right, so we have one mic rotating and I'm going to start by just saying that today's conversation comes at critical moment. As you know, in recent years, a wave of hate and antisemitism has spread across the US. We see it on the radical right, on the radical left and among radical Islamists, which join together to promote and expand the BDS movement, which seeks to delegitimize and ultimately destroy the state of Israel. Historically, we know that any kind of hate starts with the Jew, but it never hates with the Jews. Uh, we already mentioned what happened this past week with Elon Carr, I think it's good news. Uh, but also something else happened this week and that's, I don't know if you got a chance to watch it, but the Ministry of Strategic Affairs and Public Diplomacy, Gilad Ardon, Minister Gilad Ardon in Israel, published an intensive report about the ties between the NGOs promoting BDS and terrorist organizations called Terrorist in Suit Report. So antisemitism today looks a little different than in the past. And so, I'd like to refer first, my first question is to David Brog. What is the antisemitism of today? Where does it come from? Why is it there?
So, you know, growing up, I grew up in New Jersey in the, in the seventies. And I used to have this ongoing debate with my father. My father grew up during the antisemitism, the benign antisemitism, the WASP antisemitism back in the forties and the fifties. You can't come into our golf club, you can't come to our university, you can't live in our neighborhood. And he always warned me about antisemitism in America, you know, it's never going to go away. And I told him, "You're wrong, that antisemitism is going away. Those old days, those old WASPs are being overwhelmed in their clubs and their law firms and their universities. The antisemitism you faced is gone, I'm going to live in a country without antisemitism." Lost my dad a year ago, became a father a year ago. And I'm sad to admit that my father was right and I was wrong. I was right in that his antisemitism, the antisemitism he faced is gone. It's really not an issue we confront as Jews in America. But as we all know, antisemitism is on the rise again. And I think it's important and critical that we identify its sources. For the purposes of our argument tonight, life is never this neat. I want to put it into three categories. Three categories of antisemitism, all rising, by the way. Category one, right-wing extremism, Zionism. Right-wing extremist Zionism. It's these crazy conspiracy theories on the far right that Jews are controlling America. It's always taking some new crazy iteration as conspiracy theories do. The latest iteration is that the Jews who control America are importing Muslims to replace white people. Remember, marching in Remember, marching in Charlottesville, Jews will not replace us. I was behind on my conspiracy theories. I thought those people carrying the tiki torches were saying Jews will not come and replace us as white people. No, the Jews are the subjects of the sentence. Jews will not replace us with the Muslims they're importing. This is crazy stuff. And yet, it's a threat to us, because as you all know, a sick man believing this theory walked into a synagogue in Pittsburgh and murdered 11 Jews. So this is crazy, it is fringe, and it is deadly. But here's the thing. This crazy fringe ideology has not penetrated our academia, it has not penetrated our media, and it has not penetrated our politics. You're not going to find any mainstream academic institution, any mainstream media outlet, any mainstream political organization willing to accept this crazy ideology. It remains a fringe ideology, a deadly ideology, but one that must be dealt with for the physical threat it is by the police, by the FBI. It's a counterterrorism challenge. At the moment, nothing more. Antisemitism number one. Antisemitism number two, radical Islamic antisemitism. The belief that the Quran calls upon you to murder Jews. Most Muslims throughout, most Muslim history haven't believed that. They believed, actually, if you're a Jew, you're a protected class. You're second class. You must be demonstrably second class. You can't kill us. But there's new interpretations of Islam that say, "No, no, actually, you must kill the Jew. You must kill the infidel." This is deadly stuff, right? It was only a couple of months ago, someone shouting "Al-Hu Akbar" in his car tried to drive, you know, run over two Jews leaving synagogue in Los Angeles. We all know the toll this form of radical Islam takes in Israel. But it is a fringe ideology. It's deadly, it's a physical threat, but it's not penetrating our academia, it's not penetrating our politics, it's not penetrating our media in its purely Islamic form. Physical threat must be dealt with by the police, by the FBI as a counterterrorism threat, but not penetrating our mainstream institutions. The final form of antisemitism that's on the rise in America is not a physical threat to us at the moment. And this is the antisemitism that masquerades as anti-Zionism. This is the antisemitism that says, "I love Jews, I just hate Israel. I love the Jewish people, some of my best friends are Jews, I just don't like Zionists." Let's be clear, it's not antisemitic to criticize Israel. We all do it. I do it at least a few times a day. It's not antisemitic to criticize Israel. Most Israelis I know would be antisemites by that standard. It is antisemitic to criticize only Israel, to scan the globe, and the only time you're bothered to speak out and criticize a government is if it's the Jewish government of the Jewish State of Israel. That is pure distilled antisemitism. You want to talk about Muslim suffering in the world today? There's a genocide against Muslims being perpetrated against the Rohingya in Myanmar. Muslims are being herded into concentration camps, Uighur Muslims are being herded into concentration camps by the Chinese, millions of them. If the only time you can be roused to be upset by the treatment of Muslims is when you can blame it on the Jewish state, I'm sorry, you're a biggie. You've got a problem with Jews. Here's the problem with this last form of antisemitism. It's not penetrating our academia, it's taken over our academia. It has taken over large swathes of our media, and it is in the process of taking over one of our two political parties. I'm not trying to be partisan. It's in the process of taking over the base of the Democratic Party. We see it in representatives that were recently elected to Congress who support BDS. And by the way, as someone who loves Israel, as a Republican who loves Israel, I'll come clean, this is a tragedy. The day Israel stops being a bipartisan issue in America is a tragedy. We can't allow this to happen, because I might not be a political expert, but I suspect the Democrats might win the White House again one day. We can't have a party, one of our two major parties, against Israel. So this last form of antisemitism, I'll finish here now. This last form of antisemitism is not a physical threat to us, but it's a threat because it's taking over our politics, our media, and our academia. And the last thing is, it's a threat because most people don't even recognize it for the antisemitism. It is, including Jews. You have people spouting this type of antisemitism all the time, including young Jews, and they don't even realize how bigoted they are. Until we can call it out for what it is, identify it for what it is, how can we combat it? So the challenge is before us today, this is the one that's not just a counterterrorism threat. This is something all of us can do something about.
Daniel, thank you. I'll bring up this point a bit later. We're coming to it. Thank you, David, for giving us a wide overview of what it is, what does it look like, where it's coming from. I'd like to direct the next question to Jolie Brislin from our Executive Director for ADL. If you can, from the 80,000 up to down to the levels of the streets of the State of Nevada and Las Vegas, so what have we been seeing right here in our neighborhoods, at home, that you can share with us? And what are some things, any insights you would like to share with us?
So, thank you, and David, thank you for your passionate explanation of antisemitism. So let's first start with the increase that we're seeing nationally. Oh, thank you. Is that better? Okay. So let's talk about the increase that we're seeing nationally. We've seen a 57% increase in antisemitic incidents this past year, all right? I don't know if anybody here saw the FBI report that recently came out about hate crimes. There were over 7,000 hate crimes reported this year, and out of those 7,000 hate crimes, 938 of them were targeted towards the Jewish community. And out of all the religious communities in the United States, that was the highest on the FBI's hate crime monitoring. So, you know, that's something that we need to be paying attention to as well. And then when we talk about Nevada, so that's nationally what we're seeing. We're seeing the increase of antisemitism on the left, we're seeing it on the right, we're seeing it with BDS, and then we're seeing it here locally. We're seeing it at a 37% increase over last year. And that's just within the state of Nevada. So for instance, when there's an incident that takes place here, whether it's taking place at a school, it's taking place in a workplace, it's taking place on a university campus, many times they will reach out to the ADL and they'll reach out to law enforcement. Because what the ADL does is we track this information, and we're able to then work with law enforcement to educate our elected officials, we're able to work with our elected officials to educate our school systems, and to make sure that we're letting the community understand what we're seeing at that level as well. A very disturbing fact that I wanted to share with all of you is, the ADL's Center of Technology and Society in Silicon Valley that monitors hate online came out with a report that last year there were over 4.2 million antisemitic tweets, and that was just in English. So that was posted and reshared. So that's, I mean, that's how the information's being disseminated. When David spoke about his father's antisemitism, I don't think his father could ever imagine the place where social media would come into all of that, which then takes on a life of its own as well. So, you know, those are some of the things that we're seeing here. We have, and I think Esther's going to talk a little bit more about this as well, but the work that we're doing with the school districts, both CCSD and Washoe County, to make sure that the Holocaust is being taught correctly. And I say that because Esther knows as well that within the state of Nevada, the way that the Holocaust is taught leaves a lot of variance for teachers to be able to put their own interpretation, which then ultimately can lead to different points of theory that we on the stage in this room would disagree with, which then the students are taking this in and then learning about it and going out about and teaching it to other people. So that's what we're seeing here locally. That's what we're combating locally and making sure that we are all educated, because we know that the only way to combat antisemitism is through education.
Thank you, Jolie. I'd like to bring the next question to Rabbi Goodman. And I want to go from, so now we know what it is, we heard the different kind of shape and form, we know what's happening here, and, but I want to ask Rabbi Goodman, a lot of it is something to do with the way people think, that it's not always what it seems. Some of the movements seem to be so attractive, so in alignment with our social values, and yet we're not aware that something else is going on. Can you share with us some of your concerns?
Sure. I first want to say that I think, David, the third type of antisemitism that you mentioned, it's actually a critical front to our survival. I think that the confusion between anti-Zionism and antisemitism really is what's going to actually do us in. It's the most horrible, non-violent, for now, type of antisemitism I've seen in my life. And I'll tell you a story. Simchat Torah on the Upper West Side in Manhattan. Many of you have seen it. It's really, there's thousands of young men and women dancing with the Torah on the Upper West Side. So my daughter goes to Columbia University, she goes to Garner. And the day after Simchat Torah, after Yom Tov, she called me, she was crying on the phone, and she told me that, you know, it was incredible, it was euphoric, and like at 2:00 in the morning, a group of like 300 students ended up at the steps of the library at Columbia University, and they started singing a Tikva. And at that moment, half the students just left. They did not want to participate, and they started yelling things at the other kids, right? So they're making Israel into a divisive issue in the Jewish community, number one. They're making Israel into these horrible words that we can't even mention, we can't talk about it in our synagogues or our schools because it polarizes us. And I've never seen it like that before. And by the way, that's a unique phenomenon. Again, it exists in Europe, yes, but because of the numbers, it is unique in the way in which it's taking shape in the United States. No other Jewish community in the world is being polarized and torn apart by the BDS movement, anti-Zionism, like this community is being torn apart. And when people say they hate Israel, make no mistake, they hate the Jewish people, just like David said. But I want to add something else to that. Whenever you're having a civilized conversation with someone, and they tell you they have nothing against the Jews, it's just the way we treat, now that we have power, the way we treat the others. The problem is not Israel, the problem is Jews with power. The world is not used to seeing Jews in prominent positions, and every time this happens, they turn against us. Just look at Jewish history, that's all you have to do. I think that one of the most important things we can do as a community today is actually create partnerships, which is something our grandparents didn't do, because they were afraid, right? They were afraid of the other because the other was always against them. But one of the biggest lessons I've had is that, for example, not all evangelicals are right-wing crazies, like Josh is very normal. And by being partners with them, there's 50 million of them, they support the Jewish people, they support the State of Israel, we actually don't feel alone. So you talk about an ideology, Noah, that can really help us, without trying to destroy us, without trying to take us over, which is what we always think is the ulterior motive, you found it. Look, I'm going on the March of the Living this year with our kids from Temple Beshalom, and with me is coming Pastor Ty Perry. Our community is sponsoring him to come, because we believe it's so important for non-Jews to understand what we feel when all of these things happen. And so I believe it has to do with power, Jews in positions of power, and Jews not doing the dying or not refusing to do the dying anymore. And that's the problem. So I hope I answered your question a little bit, at least.
Actually, you have. And as an Israeli, most of you know that I grew up very, very secular. Even though my grandmother was a granddaughter of an Orthodox rabbi in Zurich, she was the ninth one, ninth child, the only one that made a liat to Israel. As soon as she touched the grounds of Israel, she left all her 630 mitzvahs back in Zurich, and in her mind, that's it. I'm in Israel, I'm doing the number-one job that God would want me. And I wasn't raised with many Jewish, I was very Jewish, I knew the Jewish Bible from historical point of view, but not from the religious perspective. And that brings me to question Esther Finder over there, because it sounds very familiar to Europe in the 20s, where most Jews were trying to take off any signs of Judaism. They wanted to be Dutch, and Austrians, and German, and Polish, and whatever they were, and their Jewish identity wasn't as important. And maybe, I'm just wondering if what we're seeing today with the huge number of unengaged, unaffiliated Jews, that is just a burden, let's just be Americans. What are we seeing from the history that we can learn nowadays?
When you go back and you look at Germany before World War II, the Jewish population was very highly assimilated. The Jews looked like everybody else, they looked like their Christian neighbors, they spoke like them, they spoke like them, they engaged in commerce like them, so they fit in, they were like everybody else, and they didn't necessarily think of themselves as Jews first, they thought of themselves as Germans. But we saw that it didn't take very long for the Nazis to rebrand them, to reformat the Jewish image. And part of that came from the fact that even though the Jews were a very small percentage of the population, they were less than 1% of the population in Germany, and we are less than 1% of the population here in the United States. But what's similar is that in both cases, here and in Germany, there are a lot of very successful, very prominent Jews who are very, very visible. And because they are so visible, people tend to think that there are more Jews than there are. So when they see somebody like a Steven Spielberg, from there they assume the Jews run Hollywood. That's all it takes. And for us, we know that when a Jew does something well, we all have nachas, we all take pride in that. So when Spielberg wins an Academy Award, he's one of ours. But when you have somebody like a Bernie Madoff or Weinstein, when I think of these two, I think right back to the Nazi propaganda, where you have the Jews were the financial manipulators, like Madoff, and the Jews were lecherous, and they preyed on innocent Aryan women, shades of Harvey Weinstein. So, I mean, they could be the poster boys for the Nazi propaganda from back then. So we see some things that are sadly very parallel. And did I answer your question or...
Yes, you did. Thank you so much. Thank you.
It was a pop quiz.
You did very well. So that brings me to Pastor Josh. Thank you so much for being with us today. I always wonder, you know, we Jews, yeah, we'd better be worried about antisemitism. It's very much directly affecting us. And whenever there are Christians, and Muslims, and any other from other religions worry, not as much as we are, but worry even more than we are, I'm always getting inspired by that. And so I'd like to ask you, have you seen the rise of antisemitism in the broader of American Christianity? What are you making out of all of it? What do you think we together should do to take care of this problem?
I do think there's a concern in broader American Christianity as a whole. American evangelicals, by and large, are extremely supportive, not only of the Jewish people, but especially the State of Israel. And I think that's important to understand. So this is a misconception. Now, what is not a misconception is that the Jewish community sometimes and the evangelical community don't agree on everything. Of course, we don't agree on everything. We have clear aspects of our theology that are very different from one another. And some... And sometimes, we give each other the idea, even within our own communities, that to become friends and close and supportive and even being willing to fight for one another, that we have to agree on everything. And I think we have to begin by saying that's not true. We need to agree that we will not always agree on all things. But with that being stated, we need to agree that we stand with each other. The evangelical Christian community among the United States, as I said, is by and large extremely supportive, not simply of the Jewish people, but of the state of Israel. However, I do see a rise of antisemitism in broader Christianity outside of evangelicalism. And this would be found in much of the mainline Protestant denominations. This is very concerning. Not complete, but definitely there. And it's with a theology that's referred to as replacement theology. It's an ancient theology that goes back to the Middle Ages that teaches the Christians have come to replace the Jewish people. And it's actually what gave rise to much of what you saw in Germany during the times of the Holocaust. It's not biblical, that is, it is not historically Christian. It's something that rose up, and it's beginning to make its way, obviously, through the religious communities of Europe, and it's beginning to find its way into some Protestant denominations now. So what can we do? What we can do is we can develop deeper relationships. I love what Rabbi Goodman stated, partnerships between the Christian community, the evangelical community, and the Jewish community. We attempt to model this for our flocks, for our congrega... Do you call it a flock? You don't call it a flock.
No. They don't follow like a flock.
Oh, you don't follow like a flock? We call ours a flock.
No, we're not.
So, that's hilarious. That's pretty good.
That would be nice, wouldn't it, though?
So, we try to model this, though, for our congregations. And this is why we have a deep relationship. We began in our relationship, I believe, really simply as to model it for others, because we believe the Jewish community and the Christian community, Rabbi Tektil and I are dear friends, Rabbi Goodman and I are dear friends, Pastor Perry and both of them dear friends. And we started out as a mission to, I think, exemplify to others, this is the way it should be. But what has happened, genuinely, over the years, is that we have fallen in love with each other. I don't know if you all are comfortable with terms like that, but Christians talk about love all the time. And what has happened is that our partnership has become a genuine friendship. And so now, now, if they ever came for him, they would go through me.
And vice versa, Rabbi Goodman says.
And I hope that that continues, not just with leaders in the community, but that it filters down through our entire congregations and that we all begin to build those deeper relationships. And I think that destroys it. Yes, political people in power, but in reality, communities loving one another, getting to know one another, and caring for one another, very important to us.
Thank you so much. So the mic is traveling all the way to Dr. Bernd Walshlager. I've got some questions for you from the audience. And I'm going to start from an easy one, like, have you ever had a DNA testing showing whether there are any Jews in your family line?
All right. I got this question a few times, so I had to do the test. First of all, my motivation was not proving that somewhere in my darkest past, or family's darkest past, there's a Jew somewhere that my mother would describe it. Because we didn't have genetic testing, so I didn't have the reason to do it, and I converted out of conviction. But I did it 25 years later, when I participated in the first ancestry studies that were found in one website on the internet. And I found out that for my father's side, there's very strong influences from Scotland, Norway, Sweden, Central Europe. And from my mother's side, a whole potpourri, a mishmash, from Algeria, Tunis, and Morocco. So one jury counsel told me, well, there are two explanations. Either you belong to a post-Jewish tribe who just migrated somewhere to the east. And actually, from my family history, from my mother's side, I found out that their forefathers came from northern part of France, northern part of Spain, southern part of France, and migrated towards the east from my maternal side, maternal grandmother. So there's an indirect marker that either we were Muslim, Musliman, as they called them, or that they were Jews, kolakavod. But it didn't influence my decision to become a Jew. I don't say it defensively.
Well, keep the mic, because there's a question for Dove. Would you take a question? For Dovele Dubi, as you wish. So someone is asking, have you ever personally visited Auschwitz?
Yes, I did. I, 2004, no, it was 2014, 2012, I'm sorry, I participated in the March of the Living as a physician for the group out of Florida, and was responsible for the group health and of course prepared myself for what I'm going to see in Auschwitz, together with my daughter. Any preparation, intensely, not intensely, year-long, two years-long, 10 years-long, cannot prepare you for what you're going to see. It was the hell on earth. Rabbi Lau, former chief rabbi of Israel, himself a Holocaust survivor, called this Dante's Inferno. It was, I understood, staying in this vast killing fields of Auschwitz, there was no way out. Even the thought to escape, you couldn't have it, but you prayed that you would die soon, because this was the hell on earth. It was overwhelming. It was painful, extremely painful, and it reinforced my conviction that this can never happen ever again. But unfortunately, it happens. And if I may digress just 30 seconds, I'm not one of those who is very afraid of antisemitism, because it never died. It just was contained. We always live with antisemitism in the United States, but now people have the permission to talk, A, to a permission, permissive environment with politicians on all walks of life, equal opportunity employer right and left, use anti-Jewish ideology to make a point. Secondly, we're living in a time which is actually was never as better for the Jewish state and for the Jewish people. I don't want to offend you, but American Jews love to whine. And yes, the murder of Jews is intolerable and should never happen again, but it happened many times before. So what you need to do is be proud and stand up and not say, oh, I'm a Jew, but I can explain it. You said, I am a Jew and I'm proud of it. And if you don't condemn the ruined mass murder, and you don't condemn the mass murder in Yemen, if you don't condemn the Saudi Arabians, what they're doing, if you don't condemn the Serbs where they stopped counting 500 million victims, then you are an anti-Semi. Period over now. Take it as you want it. But we should be proud, not retreating. We are in the best time of ever any Jews could live in. Israel is in the center of, in the Middle East, and even our most ferocious enemies come to visit us. Saudi Arabia, I don't like them very much. Egypt helps us to renegotiate with Hamas. His Bolan knows exactly that one missile flies over the border, it will cause the destruction of the state of Lebanon, because they're part of the government now. This is the best time for the state of Israel. Why shouldn't we whine? I'm sorry, I have to be, take the other position. I feel proud as a Jew, I feel proud of the state of Israel, and we should stand up as proud Jews and say, whatever nonsense you just spit out of your mouth, it's total nonsense, because we're way above. We are a mighty force in the world for good. Nobody talks about what happened on the border. One quick anecdote. Anecdote, I was a combat physician in the army. We had a case in Ramallah where a local physician had my number, called me, and I was stationed in Beit Al, right next to the settlement, who stoned us all the time. He has a breach presentation, a woman is in breach presentation, give birth, the baby will die, the mother will die. We took a jeep, went down, full arms and gear, in a war zone. He opened the door, said we need to get her immediately to the hospital. Other people came out and said, we can help you, we can, that nothing happens when you're on the way. And we brought her to, with a helicopter, to Hadassah in Kerem. We work and live together for a long time. Let's cherish those who want to work with us instead of being afraid for those who hate us. Don't make an anti-Semi bigger than they are. They're bigots, they're cowards, and the old BDS ideology is BS.
Thank you.
Can I, no, can I say something to our guest?
You know what? I am willing to have the mic travel back to me, with each one of you saying a quick comment that you just feel like saying right now until I get my question, but just make it really short.
I would just like to say that I know what it's like to be the daughter of two Auschwitz survivors, and I've often wondered what it's like to be a person of conscience and be the descendant of perpetrators. And I thank you so much for speaking with everybody today.
The topic of this conversation was about, is antisemitism being normalized? And I think the fact that we're all here, this is how we don't allow antisemitism to become normalized. So it's very powerful to see a room with so many people in it.
Thank you, Julie.
I don't think that we whine, doctor. I think we're very naive. I think that's a problem with the American Jewish community. When that murderous, horrendous thing happened in Pittsburgh, people were shocked. Those of us who were not born here were not shocked. That's the difference. That's why people say what they say and feel the way they do, because they're not used to being shot at in this country. And that's part of the problem. I'll leave you with this thought. Elie Wiesel, the most powerful lesson I've ever learned from him was, more than listening to the promises of my friends, I better believe the threats of my enemies. That's what he said was his biggest lesson in his life. So we cannot minimize antisemitism. I agree, we have to stand up to them, but we cannot ignore it. We have to stand up to it and finish it, right? And not be afraid to be who we are and to use any amount of power that we have to confront it.
Thanks, Rabbi.
I think of something you mentioned, Rabbi. Antisemites are out there. They threaten us physically, they threaten us politically. What I'm most worried about is the damage done to our own people, to our own youth, to our own children. And any effort we make to fight antisemitism has to start at home. To have so many Jewish children leading the charge for BDS on campus, to have so many Jewish children leading the criticism of Israel, hating their own heritage and their own people, means we've allowed their hate to pervert our psychology. And that's what disgusts me and worries me the most. So we have to worry about what's outside, but even more, we have to worry about how it's penetrated our own community, our own people, our own children. And the pride, and the knowledge, and the pushing back starts at home.
And case in point, that hideous, ridiculous Women's March, right? When our kids who want to be progressive and want to be liberal can no longer do so, because all of progressive ideology in this country is in the hands of people like the Women's March, who disguise behind it under the most violent, horrible, despicable antisemites.
In the same way that the state of Israel looks at the United States of America as an ally and a support, is the same way the American Jewish people should look at the evangelical Christian community as an ally and a support. It is who we are, and I am not an anomaly. There are thousands of pastors like myself who are leading hundreds of thousands of evangelicals, millions in reality, of support of the Jewish people and the Israeli state, and you need to know that we stand with you.
Thank you. So for the next last 10 minutes that we have left for the panel, and I'd like also to say, I'm keeping all the questions. What I'm going to do, I'm going to send all our panelists an email with all your questions, because there's so many of them and they're so good, and I'm going to publish all their answers, okay? So every question is going to be publicly asked and publicly answered. So just don't worry, but I'm going to try and make one last, not last question, but one question that combines many of the cards that I've read so far. Dr. Bernd, you mentioned, let's not bring politics anymore into this conversation, yet, yet it seems that there is, and it may not be, you don't have to answer it, maybe anyone in the panel that has any thoughts. And I got many, many cards asking about, other than how can we combat subtle everyday antisemitism, such as the jokes, the negative ethnics, the stereotypes, but also some questions as to why people like George Soros, for example, hurting Jews everywhere while he's a Jew himself. Questions like, there are good people in the Democrat Party as well as the Republican Party, yet why we see, why we criticize? How do we? And so I think we need to, for us to crack the problem, we need to admit that there are perceptions out there, and how can we really, we say we need to take politics out of it, we say that Israel, Zionism, Jewish people should not be political, but there are perceptions and they are, seems to sort of divide our community more than unite us. What are your perspectives?
Well, I may have to take my gloves off.
Easy, easy, easy.
And I'll be very kind, I take them off, not, I don't want to battle, I take them off. And let's look a little bit deeper into the words that are being used in our society. I speak perfect German. I studied Nazism, I actually have a, reading currently a thousand-page book about the emergence, the possibility of the Holocaust to emerge as one of the worst genocides in human history. And I came over and over again at the same words that have been used in the past. Lügenpresse, lying media and fake news. Nothing against, I'm not for or against any political party. I'm a centrist. But one thing that I cannot tolerate, that words that were used against Jews and were used in favor of Nazism are being used in this country. Lying media comes out of Goebbels' textbook, I read it. Goebbels' textbook also contains the following sentence, I translated from German into English. "You have to create a big lie, report it over and over until people buy the truth." That is Goebbels' propaganda. And if any politician from the right, left, above or below uses these words, he is using willingly or unwillingly Nazi propaganda. And combine this with the schmutz that is going on in the website, Facebook, who doesn't take any responsibility, Twitter, who doesn't take any responsibility, that is a like and spread in milliseconds throughout the whole world, like a live wildfire, then you can imagine what one word, even not spoken, is totally convinced, but just picked up some phlegm there, have a tremendous impact throughout the world. We have to be very careful what words we are using. Words kill.
Yeah, we'll have the traveling mic. That's okay. Go ahead, Esther.
What we have today, we have some misfits and disgruntled individuals who are sitting at home in front of their computers in the privacy of their own homes, and they think they're big shots. And they say some mean-spirited things. And sadly, some of them find kindred spirits, and they embolden each other. And that's when you find people walking with tiki torches in the streets of the United States. These big shots from the privacy of their own home. We have to stop that, we have to counter that, we do have to speak up. And the big lie, for those of you who don't understand the philosophy behind the big lie, I'm a retired psychology professor, everybody tells little lies. If somebody tells a big whopperdoodle of a lie, the impression is that it's got to be true, because nobody would make up a lie that big. People are likely to question a little lie and much less likely to question a big lie.
Thank you.
I would say it's not about the left or the right, it's about wrong ad right. And so speaking out is what we need to be doing, and calling it for what it is, and calling out antisemitism and bigotry.
Thank you.
You know, I think that part of the problem that we have is that, for many of us, whether we're on the right or the left, that's become a religion. And we stop listening to other people and to other ideas, and that's when bad and terrible things happen. We have an obligation as Jews, first of all, to see the world as Jews, and to actually, I believe, seek the balance that is actually good for us. Whenever the world goes to the right or to the left, it is not good. Whenever the world goes to the right or to the left, it is not good for the Jewish community. We need to be very, very aware of when it's being polarized. And again, rather than making the left or the right our own political ideology, our religion, we need to listen to the people. What Dr. Volchire said right now is absolutely true. And all of us who understand those terms, have been listening to them for a couple of years now, horrified, horrified.
Thank you.
So I wanna, in the spirit of loving dissent, Rabbi and Burnt, and Burnt, I came here primarily to learn from you, and you bring a perspective that we all should listen to. So when you make a point, I'm loath to disagree, because I should listen and learn from you. And yet, and yet, I think we need to be careful making Holocaust analogies. I think we need to be careful making Nazi analogies. No, no, I took from your words that President Trump is using the same. I took from your words.
You didn't say that.
I did not use, I made it very clear. It has nothing to do with the politics, but it's the culture in this country. If you're right or left, or middle or above or below, anybody is equal. When you're using this kind of word, knowing that these are fascist, antisemitic wording, then you are a fascist.
So someone...
Anybody who uses these words and knows what they mean, and is in a position of power, he opens the gates of hell and lets the hell coming out loose. This has to be fought with, because it's from Goebbels' textbook of propaganda. I read it. Lying media, fake news.
So you didn't...
This is something where we have to stand up and say, color, stop it. We don't let it coming out of the hell, we contain it. I've not said, President.
You did not, you did not.
But you didn't say the president, but he said anyone using these terms.
Anyone can be anyone.
Anyone using these terms.
I genuinely, I'm really, I'm offended that you put these words in my mouth. I did not. I told you about, and I tried to educate you about what words can do, regardless of others, a Republican, Democrat, Independent, I don't care. But these are words of fascism, and we know what fascism means to us.
Let it go. Okay, okay. Well, I could be, but all I'm trying to say is... Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. I have a right to speak.
Hold on.
I have a right to speak. You don't have to agree with me.
David, one second, one second. I'm the moderator. Let me just put some boundaries. We are about to come to the last part. I'm gonna have David answer in about a minute, or there's nothing really to answer, because if you remember, the question was, I can't even remember what was the question, but I know what is the question right now. The question is, give us one piece of advice that we can walk away with, practical, that we can take home, take to our children, take to our families, get educated, and be part of this combating squatting.
All right, let's understand the times in which we live and the threats that we face. And let's understand who our friends are and who our enemies are. And I think that's more important than some of the analogies to speech and terms that have been used. And we can have a friendly disagreement. I'm trying to disagree agreeably. Not everyone's trying to disagree agreeably with me. But I think if we look at who's acting in our defense and our best interest and who is not, that to me is more important than some of these other analogies that are being made. Let's look at our days clearly.
Thank you.
I would like to begin by just saying that I'm glad it did not get awkward at all tonight. Because if it did, I would feel very weird.
That's why I went at a flock.
I would say this, the one takeaway that I would give is something that we do teach in our church, and we try to. Our church is extremely diverse, people from all walks of life and political persuasions. One of the things that I say to an evangelical church is it's extremely dangerous for an evangelical church to be bought, lock, stock and barrel by any political party. And I think that that's true also not only for an evangelical church, we have a large African-American population in our church. And I'll say, for the African-American community to be bought, locked, stocked and bought by any political party. And I think that would be true for the evangelical community, African-American community, the Jewish community, whatever it might be, that we remain free thinkers and not just support a party, but a person.
Thank you. So now I'm coming to my last question. And I'm gonna have all of you answer it, please, in short. And I'd like to start with you. Please share with us one reason, we all know, you know what, let me rephrase. We all know why we should be concerned, but share with us one reason why we should be optimistic about moving forward as one united community.
I'm gonna give you a very religious answer, because the Bible teaches us that Israel is the apple of the eye of God the Father. That God loves the Jewish nation, the Jewish people, and Israel. And I think when we have Him on our side, no matter who is against us, we will stand.
The great thing about our side in this battle for Israel's future, and the future of the Jewish people, is that the truth is on our side. And we've gone to some of the toughest places, some of the toughest campuses that are against Israel, that have passed BDS, but when we can get the attention of students and share the truth about Israel with them, we win. And that's the most encouraging thing. We don't have to hide, we don't have to lie. We just have to share the truth. It's hard, but it makes me optimistic.
The Talmud says, "Three precious gifts God gave to Israel." "Adorah, veretz Yisrael ve'olam haba." The Torah, the land of Israel and the world to come. "Velonatan el al yeh dey Isurin." He only gave it to us on account of our suffering. The rabbi spent pages and pages and ink trying to figure out what this means. So for me, as a modern Jew, I cannot even understand what suffering really means to acquire those things. And that's why I'm optimistic. Because the state of Israel, for me, is a reality that I really never had to worry about. My father's generation didn't have that. I'm optimistic because my children love Israel as much as I do. And hopefully, they will teach that to their children. But we cannot let our guard down. I'm very optimistic, because like Burnt said, we really have never had it as good as now. And that's a wonderful, wonderful thing.
I'm optimistic because of our community, because of our country, because of the fact that even if we don't always agree, we stand together, and we do speak out, and we call antisemitism out. And that's what we're gonna continue to do.
Thank you, Julie.
I'm gonna take a totally different approach. I have spent a lot of time over the last couple of days speaking to people about the Holocaust. I've been to Nellis Air Force Base, I've been to schools, I've talked to hundreds of people. And when I speak to them, they listen, they get it, and they care. And because of that, I'm hardened.
I'm very optimistic of the future of Israel and the state of Jews in the world, because the state of Israel is at the height of its triumphant rise. We are safe, secure, talking to our neighbors, which we should, even though because you don't talk to friends, you talk to enemies. And we go together against a common enemy, which I haven't heard here, called Iran. Okay, Saudi Arabia is talking to us because your enemy, the enemy of my enemy is my friend, maybe like that. But there's a true recognition that we don't go anywhere. On the second part, I'm a little bit concerned about American Jews. I still have a hard time to break through and identify themselves, because they're using the term like Reform Judaism, Conservative Judaism, Reconstructive Judaism, and whatever is. Do you think in Auschwitz and the ramp, when you were selected to be asked if you're Reform or if you're Orthodox or not, you were a Jew? So let's be and come together as Jews, act as Jews, come together in a common enemy, and at least stay together and set an example for our children. That Judaism is not only about bar mitzvah, but it's standing up for our rights, our history, our religion, and for anything that we are proud of. Stand up and stand up.
So I'd like to thank our panelists and have you please sit down while, or remain in your seats. While I welcome to the stage Rabbi Sandy Alexorad, whom I knew would be the perfect person to bring our closing remarks and close our panel. And just so you know, remember, we're gonna do some sing-along, so just stay, and we'll continue very shortly.
One, two. It has been just about three months since the mass shooting at the Tree of Life synagogue in Pittsburgh. And immediately following the shooting, this synagogue was filled with Jews of every stripe and age, and people of so many different faiths who came together to raise our voices as one. Why am I hopeful? We had a vigil, but I looked out, and I saw people who were mourning, but also people who were hopeful. Hopeful that we were not alone, that we stood together as Jews, but as people of many, many different faiths. Noah, I saw you sitting there next to a Muslim, and the last song was "I'm Israel Chai", and the Muslim was singing it with you. And that brought me hope.
I know, I had to translate the words to him.
And he still stood, and he still sang.
He still stood, and he still sang with me.
Yes, I remember seeing that. This, I think, is the secret of our people, when we sing things like "I'm Israel Chai", to find out that despite our hardship, our ways to embrace life, to find the light that makes its way through the darkness and the cracks in the walls that separate us from each other. The secret is that we live in antisemitism, which is as old as Pharaoh, as the Crusades, as the Holocaust, as yesterday, but is so too, is our belief in who we are and what we are. And that our desire to be a light unto the nations is strong enough to ultimately vanquish the darkness of hatred, intolerance, and bigotry. We support organizations that combat hate and antisemitism, and surely we do not put our heads in the sand. But we also know that if there is an existential threat to our existence, it can also be fear and apathy. We must seek not just to destroy the oi that may attack us, but seek out the joy that will embrace us. We have more to lose than we realize if we allow our fears to be what define us, rather than our values, which shape us. For the people of Israel to live, we must live as Jews. However we define our Judaism, we must not hide or run away or think that we can escape because we do not care or not part of the community. Our greatest shield is in caring. Our greatest virtue is in caring. Our greatest strength is in caring about each other, about the world in which we live, and about the importance of sustaining Jewish values from one generation to the next. Antisemitism has taught us fear, but our response to antisemitism has taught us vigilance, courage, love, and hope. For we are indeed stronger together. "I'm Israel Chai, I'm Israel Chai, I'm Israel Chai." DJ Sinai, Canter Hutchings, they lead us in two final songs, reminding us we fight fear with hope, and that the people of Israel endure and live.
"Kol ha'ulam klo, geshet sar meod." "The whole world is a narrow bridge, the most important thing is not to be afraid."
[Singing] Kol ha'ulam klo, geshet sar meod. Geshet sar meod, geshet sar meod. Kol ha'ulam klo, geshet sar meod. Geshet sar meod. Ve'ha'ikar, ve'ha'ikar, lo lefachet, lo lefachet la. Ve'ha'ikar, ve'ha'ikar, lo lefachet la. Ve'ha'ikar, ve'ha'ikar, lo lefachet, lo lefachet la. Ve'ha'ikar, ve'ha'ikar, lo lefachet la. Kol ha'ulam klo, geshet sar meod. Geshet sar meod, geshet sar meod. Kol ha'ulam klo, geshet sar meod. I'm Israel, I'm Israel, I'm Israel Chai. 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 Oda venu chai, oda venu chai. Oda venu, oda venu, oda venu chai. Oda venu chai, oda venu chai. Oda venu, oda venu, oda venu chai. I'm Israel, I'm Israel, I'm Israel Chai.
Chai!
I'm Israel, I'm Israel, I'm Israel Chai. I'm Israel, I'm Israel, I'm Israel Chai. I'm Israel, I'm Israel, I'm Israel Chai. Oda venu chai, oda venu chai. Oda venu, oda venu, oda venu chai. Oda venu chai, oda venu chai. Oda venu, oda venu, oda venu chai.